Namottasa Bhagavato Arahato Sammasambuddhasan. Namottasa Bhagavato Arahato Sammasambuddhasan. Namottasa Bhagavato Arahato Sammasambuddhasan.
The Second Noble Truth. What is the noble truth of the origin of suffering? It is craving, which renews being and is accompanied by delight and lust or craving. Delighting in this and that, in other words craving for sensual desires, craving for being, craving for non-being. But whereupon does this craving arise and flourish? Wherever there is what seems lovable and gratifying, you know, like enjoyment, a lot of enjoyment, thereupon it arises and flourishes. So it is the source. The... It springs from there many, many desires from the original source of anything that seems gratifying, anything that seems delightful. One just is enamored in it. So this noble truth must be penetrated by abandoning the origin of suffering. This noble truth has been penetrated to by abandoning the origin of suffering. Such was the vision, insight, wisdom, knowledge and light that arose in me about things not heard before. So this is the Buddha's statement about the Second Noble Truth in the Sanghuta Nikaya. So that Second Noble Truth states that there is an origin of suffering. So by origin of suffering, we mean a cause. You know, if we have suffering, then the second question is, what is the cause of suffering? And then if I can find the cause of suffering, then I have the power in my hands to do something about how to stop this suffering. I have the key within myself, hands to unlock the doors to happiness. So the Second Noble Truth with its three aspects, there is the origin of suffering, which is attachment to desire. Desire should be let go of, desire has been let go of. The Second Noble Truth states that there is an origin of suffering. The origin of suffering is attachment to three kinds of desires. Desire for sense pleasures. The Pali word is kama tanha. Desire to become bhava tanha and desire to get rid of vibhava tanha. Once you meditate on it and understand it and get into more gaining insights by reflecting on it. By reflecting, we means just thinking about it more and more so that insight arises. This is what you contemplate. The origin of suffering is attachment to desire. Sometimes we use the word craving instead of desires. So the three kinds of desire, desire or tanha, Pali word is the tanha, is important thing to understand. What is desire? What is craving? Kama tanha is very easy to understand. This kind of desire is wanting sense pleasures through the body or through other senses and always seeking things to excite us or please our senses. That is kama tanha. I'm sure many people understand that. That the more you want, the more you want more. It's just addiction kind of thing. We also contemplate the feeling of wanting to become something. So not this sense of wanting to become something other than what you are right now. Wanting to wanting to, you know, become more beautiful, wanting to become more, you know, younger, happier. You know, that's all wanting, wanting, wanting. Listen to the bhava tanha of your life. Bhava tanha is craving to become. Listen to the bhava tanha of your life. I want to practice meditation so I can become free from my pain. I want to become enlightened. I want to become a monk, a nun. I want to become enlightened as a layperson. I want to have a wife and children and a profession. I want to enjoy the sense world without having to give up anything and become an enlightened Arahant too. When we get delusional and with trying to become something, then then there is the desire to get rid of things. So we contemplate vibhava tanha, the desire to get rid of. I want to get rid of my suffering. I want to get rid of my anger. I want, I've got this anger and I want to get rid of it. I want to get rid of jealousy feelings. Notice this, notice this as a reflection of vibhava tanha. We are actually contemplating that within ourselves, which wants to get rid of things. We are not trying to get rid of of vibhava tanha. We are not making a stand against the desire to get rid of things, nor are we encouraging that desire. Instead, we are reflecting, it's like this. It feels like this to want to get rid of something. I've got to conquer my anger. I have to kill the devil and get rid of my greed. Then I will become. We can see from this train of thought that becoming and getting rid of are very much associated. So when we talk about desires, a desire to become monk, desire to become enlightened, desire to become a layperson and so on and so forth. It's not an unwholesome desire. So it's a, it's a very noble desire. Desire to become enlightened. It's, it's a very wholesome desire. So those desires or those bhava tanha cravings, we can arise, we can let it come within our, our mind. Because when we have that desire to become enlightened, when we become enlightened, then we have no more desire. So the desire to become enlightened is fulfilled and stops when we become enlightened. So it's an wholesome desire. The desire to eat and drink, it's necessary. It's not negative or evil desires or unwholesome desires. Those are desires and those desires are needed for our daily sustenance. So the idea of I want to get rid of my suffering, it's also same thing. It's a, it's something you have to do in order to carry on with your spiritual life or your everyday life. Bhava tanha, craving for becoming. For instance, becoming born in another realm, in the heavenly realm. People want to go from this realm to the heavenly realm. So they want to become or in another realm, to be born as, as a as a human being or some other celestial beings in other realms. So this process of becoming is in the sense of wanting more and more lives. So we can see that vibhava tanha is not wanting to be born. Like some people want to commit suicide, not wanting to be, not wanting to be. They're fed up with life, so they said, okay, I'm going to commit suicide, so all my problems are going to be solved. But in fact, you cannot escape from the cycle of births by just committing suicide. And we'll look at that in details why later on. So these three things, kama tanha, bhava tanha, vibhava tanha are very important aspects of the noble truths and we have to work with them. They're not totally separate forms of desire, but different aspects of it. Vibhava tanha again is craving not to be, not to become. When we say become, right now we're still, you know, the process of aging is still there. The process of growing old, becoming is still continuing and it stops until we die and then it carries on in the next life. So the Second Noble Truth is very important. It does not ask you to think. It just asks you to see it in a practical terms. You can identify, but then also it's important to recognizing all the desires that are flooding into your mind. You know, through the sense eyes, through the ears, nose, taste, touch and thinking, all these. There are floods of desires coming through those six senses. Had to do with wanting to please others, to be liked and approved of. And that's what we do in daily life. Many people want to be liked and it's nothing wrong. But which get frustrated when, you know, things don't turn out the way we want. As a monk, you have this bhava tanha, wanting people to understand everything and to appreciate the Dhamma. That's natural for us. We wish to give this beautiful teachings and wanting everybody to appreciate it from, you know, from their practical standpoint of view and to see things not only theoretically, but practically and achieve enlightenment. And that's our, our aim. May all beings be well and happy. May all beings be successful and enlightened. So even these subtle, almost noble desires are bhava tanha. But like I said, they're not unwholesome desires. They are beautiful desires that we wish others to become enlightened. Now joy and gladness are good wholesome mental factors, beautiful mental factors, you know, like loving kindness. You know, these are very beautiful mental factors that you can cultivate them. So this practice of so we need not continue, we need not continue to suffer, especially mentally. Physically, you know, we cannot help due to external circumstances. You know, like pain arises from X, Y, Z reasons and we cannot help that. But mentally we have to, we can do something about. So desire, desires or craving has a lot of power over us. Think of a drug addict or alcoholic addict. They will do anything to fulfill their addiction, even losing their homes, wives, kids, their jobs, their bank accounts. And, and in some instances, they will kill people. They will still, they will do all, they'll break all the five precepts, ten precepts, whatever. Because they are controlled there by these desires and cravings. And they are helpless. So we can allow desire to be the way it is and so begin to let go of it. So when we recognize there are, you know, negative things in our mind, we recognize it. We don't get angry about it. We don't try to suppress it. We try to see it as it is and then it's easier to let go of it. Because suppression sometimes happens that it happens that it, it comes when you suppress it, it comes twice with the force later on. And so it's, it's better to just understand desires, see their nature and, and gradually learn to let go with insight. So desire has power over us. It deludes us as long as we grasp it, believe in it and react to it. Grasping is suffering. Grasping means holding into your mind. A thought arises and I grasp that thought. It might be a noble thought. I want to become enlightened. I want to learn the Buddha's teachings. I want to learn the meditation, the practical teachings. And I want to remove suffering and become more happy and blissful in my life without, you know, any material things. And so that idea is also grasping. But in this case, it leads to end of suffering and beginning of happiness. So not all grasping is suffering. There are some noble grasping in our minds, so then becoming sets in. As soon as we grasp an idea or a thought, then becoming sets in, which means that as soon as I think about something, let's say I want to become an engineer. So I grasp that thought in my mind and then I gradually become an engineer. I go join a university, start studying about engineering and then become an engineer later on. And then I identify myself as I am an engineer. But this idea of grasping and becoming are very closely related. So contemplate on that, on that statement. Desire does not cause suffering. The cause of suffering is the grasping of desire. Because as soon as you grasp desires, becoming sets in, the process of becoming, which means you will try to fulfill that desire by any means. You really have to investigate desire and know it for what it is. You have to know what is natural and necessary for survival and what is not necessary for survival. So for survival, we only need four basic things. Food, shelter, medicine and clothes. Maybe we can throw some more things, wifi, internet, maybe cellphone. So we have all those, maybe a good job. But it doesn't stop there. We continue, we proliferate. We want more and more and more and more and there's no end to it. You know, and if we die, even if we are at the time of death, there is still more things we need. I wish I could live longer. I wish I had done so many things. I wish I'd become enlightened, so there is no end to it, you know. So we have to be very selective and understand what are the things that we really need. If you ask that to a housewife, I need a robot that will clean my house. I need this so that, you know, I have more time. So it, you know, it's necessary to have certain kinds of desires, but, you know, for survival. But it doesn't stop there in many cases. We can be very idealistic in thinking that even the need for food is some kind of desire we should not have. One can be, one can become quite ridiculous about, ridiculous about it. But the Buddha was not an idealist and he was not a moralist. He was not trying to condemn anything. He was trying to awaken us to the truths so that we could see things clearly. Once there is this clarity and seeing in the right way, then there is no suffering. You can still feel hunger. You can still feel the need for food without it becoming a desire. Food is a natural need of the body. As long as, you know, you and I, even monks need food, those needs have to be fulfilled, medicine, clothing and shelter. You can still need food without it becoming a desire. But even then it's a desire. If you try to do, you know, think more in a herspitting way of trying to analyze, it's a desire, but that desire is not something that will create a rebirth for people on the path to enlightenment. Food is a natural need of the body. The body is not self. It needs food, otherwise it will get very weak and die. When the Buddha was on his way to enlightenment before embarking on it, he had to try many ways of finding the truth. And some people said, if you eat one grain of rice and stand on your feet and torture your body, you will find the truth. And he did that for several years. He tried to emancipate his body, your skeleton and everything. But he found that it just tortures his body and there is no clarity in the mind. So it doesn't lead to enlightenment. So he said later on when he, he found that it was just, you know, not helping him by torturing his body. Then he said, okay, I may need some sustenance to carry on my practice so that my mind is not tormented by the lack of food or nutrient. So he saw the, the eating of food as not, not as something indulgenty, but as a necessary for survival and to continue his meditation practice. So the body will get weak if we don't maintain it. So we have to maintain the body. That is the nature of the body. There is nothing wrong with that. If we get very moralistic and high-minded and believe that we, we, we are our bodies, that hunger is our own problem and that we should not even eat, that is not wisdom, it is foolishness. So in the Buddha's time, there were, you know, ascetics and other spiritual seekers that were trying to find the truth and most of them did a lot of foolish things. But, you know, you need a lot of people to do a lot of other things in order to search for truth and somehow somebody will find it. So in this, it is like a groping in the dark, looking, you know, for truth. It's in the dark because, you know, it was not available, especially in the Buddha's teachings. And people wanted to find the truth. So many, many, many people did experiments in seeking after the truth. And eventually somebody found it. The Buddha found it in these Four Noble Truths is what he is teaching. So when you really see the origin of suffering, you realize that the problem is the grasping of desire, not the desire in itself. Grasping means being deluded by thinking it's really me and mine. These desires are me and there is nothing wrong with me for having them. Or I don't like the way I am now. I have to become something else. Or I have to get rid of something before I can become what I want to be. All this is desire. So you listen to it with bare attention, not saying it's good or bad, but merely recognizing it for what it is. So when we do get excessive desires, we recognize them and gradually we can control those desires. But we don't get mad at ourselves or I don't want these desires and they keep coming up and I don't want this kind of thoughts coming in my mind, but they keep coming and we become more angry and try to suppress and but when we see this whole cycle of desires, becoming and suffering and happiness, how to get it, then we learn how to let go of them without, you know, tormenting ourselves. So if you contemplate desires and listen to them, you're actually no longer attaching to them. We are just allowing them to be the way they are. Then we can come to the realization that the origin of suffering desire can be laid aside and let go of. And the question would arise is, how do you let go of things? How do you let go of desires? This means, can I have a willpower? You know, there are many places called willpower institutes or, you know, willpower centers. You try doing the willpower, but you'll find that desires are more powerful. So we learn to recognize them, understand things, then we can develop the willpower to let them go. So this means you leave them as they are. It does not mean you annihilate them or throw them away. It is more like sitting down and letting them be. Through the practice of letting go, we realize that there is the origin of suffering, which is the attachment to desire. And we realize that we should let them go, that we should let go of these kinds of desires. Then we realize we can let go of these desires. So it's a gradual path with gradual progress, gradual results. There is no longer attachment to them. So don't expect to understand the Four Noble Truths today and then to become enlightened tomorrow. It's a slow process, but something that you can see and measure your progress. Gradually you will understand that, oh, I was like this before. All these desires are heading me, craving, it brought me suffering. But by gradually letting go and practicing, I am at a new level of understanding and a new level of insight has made me happier. So you can, you can measure your progress. When you find yourself attached, remember that letting go is not that, not getting rid of or throwing away. It just means putting things down. putting things down. If I'm holding on to this clock and you say let go of it, that doesn't mean throw it out. I might think that I have to throw it away because I am attached to it, but that would just be the desire to get rid of it. We tend to think that getting rid of the object is a way of getting rid of attachment. But if I can contemplate attachment, this grasping of the clock, I realize that there is no point in getting rid of it. It's a good clock. It gives good time and it's not heavy to carry around. The clock is not the problem. The problem is grasping the clock. So what do I do? Let it go, lay, lay it aside, put it down gently without any kind of aversion. Aversion means anger. Then I can pick it up again, see what time it is and lay, lay aside when necessary. So you can have many things in your home. That doesn't mean you have a lot of desires, but if you use them without, you know, being too overly concerned or attached to it, then it will make your life easier, of course. You don't have to have an empty room and saying, oh, I have no desires. But you can use things that you have. You know, and when you have a house, you need a lot of things. A lot of things to maintain the house. You need a shed or a garage so that you can repair the house. For housekeeping, you need vacuum cleaners, zumba robots, two self-cleaning robots to vacuum your floor. You need many things. So you have to be wise and skillful. So you can, how would you lay things aside, aside that desire without aversion? How would you lay aside that desire without aversion? Simply recognizing the desire without judging it. You can contemplate wanting to get rid of it because you feel guilty about having such a foolish desire. But just lay it aside, then when you see it as it is, recognizing that it is just desire, you are no longer attached to it. So so the way is always working with the moments of your daily life. So this is like meditation in daily life and reflecting on everything that comes within our mind in daily life. It's not, you have to sit formally in meditation to then work on your mind. Everyday life is a very good situation where you can practice at work. You know, when people get angry or you get angry, you can respond to them in silence rather than being anger, generating more anger. And you can see how anger arises within you. So everyday life is a very good battleground for your Dhamma practice, for your spiritual practices and becoming enlightened. Of course, it's good to sit down formally and meditate for longer periods so that you generate more calmness and more insights arise also. So when you are feeling, so the way, so the way is always working with the moments of daily life. When you are feeling depressed and negative, just the moment that you refuse to indulge in that feeling is an enlightening or ignobling experience. When you see that you need not sink into the sea of depression and despair and wallow in it, you know, like just submerged and just being pulled in it and swimming in it. You can actually stop by learning not to give things a second thought, like ignoring it. You have to find this out through practice so that you will know for yourself how to let go of the origin of suffering. Can you let go of desire by wanting to let go of it? What is it that is really letting go in a given moment? You have to contemplate the experience of letting go and really examine and investigate until the insight comes. Keep with it until that insight comes. Ah, letting go, yes, now I understand. Desire is being let go of. This does not mean that you are going to let go of desire forever. But at that one moment, you actually have let go and you have done it in full conscious awareness. There is an insight there. This is what we call insight knowledge in Pali. We call it Mihana Dasana or profound understanding. There are many other ways of achieving insight through reading more Dhamma books, the Buddha's teachings and reflecting and understanding more deeper stuff besides what we just read. So I had my first insight into letting go in my first year of meditation. I figured out intellectually that you had to let go of everything and then I thought, how do you let go? It seemed impossible to let go of anything. In fact, we don't let go of things, we accumulate more things. How do you let go of anything? I kept on contemplating, how do you let go? Then I would say, you let go by letting go. Or you could say you let go by understanding and then letting go. Well, then let go. Then I would say, but I have to let go yet. But, but have I let go yet? And how do you let go? Well, just let go. I went on like that, getting more frustrated. But eventually it became obvious what was happening. If you try to analyze letting go in detail, you get caught up in making it very complicated. It was not something that you could figure out in words anymore. But something you actually did. So I just let go for a moment just like that. Now with personal problems and obsessions, to let go of them is just that much. It is not a matter of analyzing and endlessly making more of a problem about them, but of practicing. That state of leaving things alone, letting go of them. At first you let go, but then you pick them up again because the habit of grasping is so strong. But at least you have the idea, even when I had that insight into letting go, I let go for a moment. I let go for a moment, but then I started grasping by thinking, I can't do it. I have so many bad habits. But don't trust that kind of nagging disparaging thing in yourself, putting yourself down. It is totally untrustworthy. It is just a matter of practicing letting go. The more you begin to see how to do it, the more you are able to sustain the state of non-attachment.
Okay, so the, the question is, what is the correct way to start the practice? Because right now, when I'm, I do the practice, I find myself in the middle of the desire of the, or the suffering and just know that it happens, but I cannot see before it comes. So how can we start with this practice to understand it quite well in our daily life?
Don't worry. Don't worry. Initially, it takes time because if you understand the teachings more and more deeper, then just by reading the books, understanding and reflecting on it, you are actually doing some meditation reflection. So that will help you a lot in in catching yourself, seeing things more clearly. So if a desire comes and you act upon it very quickly and you forget, that's why we do the meditation slowly. We do the meditation of sitting down so that the mind becomes very calm. And when the mind becomes calm, it gives you the time to think about what to do. So in a situation where somebody says something and you get tried to, you get angry very quickly and you reply back to them, that's a normal mind, state of mind. But now with meditation, what happens is you give yourself that time gap of whether you want to reply to the person or respond to the person with anger or whether you can respond to the person with silence. So this gap becomes more and more bigger between your reaction to what somebody has done or said or happened, the situation that happened and your response to it. So the more you meditate, the more you can become selective in responding to any situation. So at work, if a coworker gets angry or mad or at the house, your husband gets mad at you, you can still have time to react. And that happens with greed, hatred and delusion. So when desires, greedy desires arise, you can also check, you know, so it's like the slowing down of the mind because things happen very fast, very fast in nanoseconds within the mind. And before you realize it's, the event is finished. So so many events happen in the mind so fast that with meditation, you slow down and you catch these things appropriately. So it will take a little time before you can, you know, become proficient. But just work on it, that's all. That the root of suffering is life itself, which is correct. Because when there is no life or when there is no birth, there is no suffering. When there is birth, then suffering, sorrow, lamentation, pain, grief, despair, all those things come, arise. Because when there is birth, there is all that sickness, death and so many depression, anxiety, fear, everything. So you're right. That's the cause. But if we look deeper, what is the cause of suffering? It's birth. What is the cause of birth? Then we come to the main root of suffering, I mean, of birth. And that is greed, hatred and delusion, or the unenlightened state of mind creates our future birth. So at present moment, if all our actions are geared with greed, hatred, delusion, then we are setting our future in motion in our present life. So we are creating our future in the present moment. However, when you become enlightened, then we get rid of this process of life, process of birth happening again and again. And when that happens, there is no more suffering, no more coming back into this world, no more being born into any, any worlds, heavenly world. We as Buddhists do not want to be born even in the heavens because our state air is temporary. Everything changes. So there is no permanency in any of this heavenly realms or the hell realms. Everything is always in motion throughout the whole universe. Our earth is going so fast around the sun. The sun is going so fast around other suns. And the galaxy is going around and around and so on and so forth. So this whole world, whole universe is restless. There is no rest. There is no stopping. It continues. There's always movement. So the roots of, roots of suffering are life, which is it, which is what you generalize, but if you pinpoint it, it's greed, hatred and delusion, the root of suffering. When, so that's why we study these teachings slowly and surely so that we remove them as much as we can, as far as we can. Well, for those who are not familiar, I will I will talk about the mindfulness of breathing meditation. The mindfulness of breathing is one of the meditation that the Buddha used to reach enlightenment. And in conjunction, you can use other forms of meditation, loving kindness. So this mindfulness of breathing is one of the meditation the Buddha used to reach enlightenment and he recommended the mindfulness of meditation, mindfulness of breathing meditation. There are forty different types of meditation the Buddha teaches, but it depends on the human characters. There are six types of human characters that the Buddha has recognized. And he classifies them in certain order that some have a lot of delusions, some have a lot of hatred or some are intelligent type or some are greedy type, a lot of craving. So he classified these as six different types of human characters. And he gave appropriate meditations so that they can uplift themselves. The mindfulness of breathing meditation is very powerful and very recommended. The Buddha used this many times to attain blissful states of mind. It's, it's important to to recognize that gradually, if you spend more time, then you will see the results. Gradually, if you spend more time, then you will see the results. If you don't spend time, you don't see any results. It's, it's a very good process. It lets you understand who you are. Very deeper down. So we will. It also. Mindfulness of breathing. It shows you. How the processes of bodies and the body and mind works. So we'll begin with mindfulness of what exactly is mindfulness of breathing. And of course, one of the benefits is. As you, as you. Continue with the mindfulness of breathing for longer periods of time. The bodily process is shut down. So when you, when you do the breathing in a very quiet place. You will find that your metabolism, your processes of bodily heartbeat, everything slows down, your breath slows down. It's, it's like it's disappeared. But don't worry, you're still breathing. Breath is a process of volunteering and involuntary action. So that it's consciously controlled by you, but unconsciously also. So when you're sleeping and you are dreaming, but you're still breathing. So there is a certain amount of, it's a threshold between you are controlling it and you're not controlling it. And the breath. As you go deeper in mindfulness of breathing, not only the, the bodily process, the breath shut. Becomes lesser and lesser and gradually slows down and stops. But you'll still be breathing nominally. But also the mental processes. Also kind of. Thinking. Thinking becomes quieter. And it starts. That doesn't mean that you're dead. It just means that you have now control on your thought processes. And also sensations and perceptions, they become less and less and they grow colder and colder. And consciousness becomes lesser and lesser. So it's like a process of dying. When somebody dies. What happens? Their breathing becomes less and less, the bodily functions become lesser and lesser. Their sensations and perceptions slowly grow cold and disappear. And slowly their thinking processes shut down. All the processes within the body and mind shuts down. And so meditation is a way of also understanding the death process. But you can still be conscious in meditation. So there's nothing to be afraid of meditation. When you meditate for longer periods of time and you feel like, am I breathing or not breathing? You are because the body takes over. Body is on autopilot. It controls most of the functions. So you don't have to worry. And you feel more calmer because your thinking, your inner, you know, the inner commentaries that keep on talking and talking. It, it gradually disappears, dissipates. The energy of thoughts gradually. Become lesser and lesser and, and shut down. So. For those who are not familiar with the meditation of mindfulness of breathing meditation. It's very powerful and very enjoyable, very calming. We, we observe the breath as it comes in and out between the point up here. You know, where the, there is an airflow, just like when I blow on my hand. I can feel a flow of air. You can try that. You'll feel a flow of air. So there's an air going in and out. And. We try to focus our mind, bring all the energies of the mind to just this. Flow of in breath, just up to here. You don't have to flow, follow the breath inside you. And you don't have to control the breath. Let it be natural. And what happens is that as you. As you follow the breath. It, the mind might be distracted. It might wander around. Oh, let me see what I've got to do tomorrow. Oh, I got to do this, this, this. I have to go out. Or what's coming on TV? All these things come up. But you learn to let go by not giving attention to it and by just coming back to the process of breathing in and out. And when you do that, you may, you may feel the flow of air coming here and touching. You're not touching your, any part of here. Then you lock your mind onto that spot. So now you're giving your thoughts a direction. Before, your thoughts are everywhere randomly. You know, going all over. If you analyze or if you map, if you have, if you, if you plot your thinking processes. In a graph paper, you know, time and thoughts. You will find that in one nanosecond, the thoughts are going, in another nanosecond, the thoughts are going like this. It's like a madman. The mind of a mad person. Because it's all over the place. Now what you're doing is you're giving your thoughts a direction. You're channeling the energy of the thinking processes. And thoughts are power, you know? I may have one thought, I want to go outside and a hundred and twenty, thirty pounds weight is lifted and it. It's pushed out. So thoughts are power. By merely thinking and then, you know, it brings actions and it happens, things happen. So it's very good to give our thoughts some direction. And. You will find. That. As you lock your mind here on the breath. And think things arise, you keep focusing attention continuously on that spot. Or if you don't feel the flow of air, just. Think about breathing in and out, just, just that much. Just let it breathe in and out. And don't worry about anything else. You will, your mind will become more sensitive. And you will feel the flow of air touching at certain points and that's good. If you don't feel, it doesn't matter. It will become more and more as you practice more. And you will find that the mind becomes more calmer and controlled. And we're controlling the mind in this way. We're controlling the energies of the mind. Rather than having them all over the world. The mind can travel so far, it can think about Mexico. Bahamas, Australia, and it can take you there right away. So. Everybody clear about how to meditate? And it's good to kind of relax, relax all your postures. So. It's an inward journey, you know? It's a journey inside us. And so that's why we use the breath. It's an object. When you, when you want to. If you want to go underwater, you need a submarine, correct? If you want to go to the moon, you need a spaceship, correct? If you want to go inside the mind, you need an object and that is the breath. The beautiful breath will take us inside ourselves. And make us understand who am I. So we can begin the process of meditation. Keep your attention on the breath, relax your. Body as much as you can. Focus your attention here, breathe naturally. In the beginning. You can verbalize, verbalize in this way. Calming the mind. I will breathe in. Calming the mind. I will breathe out. Calming the mind. I will breathe in. Calming the mind. I will breathe out. Concentrating. The mind. I will breathe in. Concentrating the mind. I will breathe out.